What do you think is magic about Minot?
There's literally something for everyone.
Checking out a local restaurant.
Baseball.
Hi, baseball.
Walking into a small business and visiting with the shop owner.
I think Minot's community-minded businesses make it magic.
Be thrilled.
Rediscover.
Experience.
With the magic in Minot.
How the community rallies around the Minot Air Force Base members and spouses that come to work in the Magic City.
It evolves.
The support.
Be part of the magic in Minot.
We can do anything.
Come and see.
The residents that make Minot magic, and that's what I love about Minot.
Go Minot!
The recreation.
Goo goo!
The community.
The magic of discovery.
This community promotes literacy.
It is the energy!
You know what makes Minot magic to me? It's our downtown.
I believe Mesa really puts the magic in Minot.
Opportunity.
The culture.
The generosity and the unyielding friendliness.
The way our community comes together.
Be a part of the magic in Minot.
Hey, Minot, 2020 is the year for more. Yes, it's the U.S. Census season, and with it, Minot could see more. More opportunities for business, more federal funding for roads, for our schools, and for our community. Take part in something more. Take the census, because for us, more means more. Visit minotnd.org to learn more.
We'll call the meeting of the Minot Special City Council meeting to order for today, Friday, July 17th, 2020. It is 12 o'clock. I would ask that everyone go ahead and silence or turn off their electronic devices to keep the distractions to a minimum. We'll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Here.
Padraig Gula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Sitma?
Here. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have one item on our agenda for the Special City Council meeting, and we will only be discussing this one agenda item as it is a special meeting. Before we get into it, I do want to, one, say thank you to everyone for showing up on short notice, and, two, apologize for the short notice as we did get the request from the Western Dakota Energy Association, as they are working on a very short notice as well per their court deadline of business, end of business to date, file this amicus brief, amicus brief. And essentially, I would look to either our city manager or city attorney for a brief description of what essentially the amicus brief is, and then I'll provide a little bit more information, and then we'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not the attorney in the group, but I'll just relay my understanding of what is taking place here. I was contacted here a few days ago from Jeff Simon, and I think we're, have him joining us on the line here, asking political subdivisions in particularly western North Dakota to sign on, or if they were interested in signing on as an affected party to an amicus brief in support of Dakota Access Pipeline. In essence, what this brief is doing is it's just outlining additional economic impacts or social impacts that may be a result of shutting down that pipeline that may not have been considered in the court's decision, and just outlining those, that additional information for their consideration. It's not taking a position on the underlying issue with the pipeline, it's just whether or not the pipeline should be allowed to operate while that decision is taking place. You know, we have been encouraged, we are impacted in a number of ways by revenues from oil production in the state. We receive Hub City funding, which comes directly from oil tax revenues. We also have funding for many of our water projects and flood control projects that are a direct result from energy tax or oil tax revenues. So things that impact, you know, the ability to export those goods out of North Dakota and impact the price of that do have an economic impact to us here in the city. In addition, there are some other secondary impacts from that, you know, in the, in loss of jobs, or, you know, the prolonged furloughing of some of those employees due to a delay or an anticipated delay in the recovery of the energy sector here, and we would have those impacts, secondary impacts such as sales tax revenues, those types of things as well. Very difficult to quantify what exactly those impacts would be from those secondary effects, but the decision is just whether we want to be listed in this amicus brief or if we want to be on the sidelines.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Acting City Manager, Lakefield. Just for council's reference to, this last legislative session was the redetermination or the, I think, the refiguring of Hub City allocations and on the premise of, I believe it was $52 to $54 per barrel for North Dakota sweet crude oil, that would have provided up to $3 million annually, $6 million for the biennium to the city of Minot for oil impact revenues, things that can be used on infrastructure, the cost of what the infrastructure was when we expanded it, as well as other impacts that came along with the oil and energy. Mr. Lakefield already talked about the economic impact from jobs, and we've certainly seen a little bit of what COVID has done. Again, looking at the amicus brief itself is, on the timeline, felt that it was necessary to call a special meeting to have that discussion, and as Mr. Lakefield pointed out, whether or not we were going to sign on as support with Western Dakota Energy Association or not. So with that, I would look for a motion if someone is ready, or if not, ask some questions before a motion is made. Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure we all, at least I have, received a lot of emails in regards to this meeting today. I guess I would make a motion to open for any public comment if the rest of the council would find that appropriate, since we have had so much input from the, from the community.
We have motion and second, and with that, it would be fine, I can just open for public comment right now without a motion. If anyone is in, and that's if, unless you want to vote on it, withdraw, and I'll just open it.
Maybe, I looked at the city attorney, is withdrawing, it'd be fine, the mayor can open it. I'll withdraw my motion.
Second agree. If there's anyone in the audience that does want to speak either in favor or opposed to the amicus brief, you're more than welcome to come to the podium, and I state your name for the record.
Hametakuyapi, chante washtaya, nape chiyuzape, lachotajay, wian washte, emachiapi, Tani Trotier Kale, emachiapi. Hello relatives, I greet you with a good heart and a handshake. My lachota name is Good Woman, and my name is Tani Trotier Kale. I am a lifelong resident of North Dakota. I currently reside at the Minot Air Force Base where my husband serves in the Air National Guard, and we have four school-aged children. I woke up this morning to tons of Facebook posts, you know how it goes, I'm sure, about there was going to be a city council meeting discussing whether or not they would be supporting the Dakota Access Pipeline. And I would question whether or not, I guess, if the city feels that this is something that we need to be spending our time on. I'm really here to speak today that I don't think trying to separate these issues of economic and social impacts and whatnot from the pipeline itself is possible. The pipeline is very interwoven with many social movements right now, whether they, you be for or against them, that is not what we're here to discuss today. But what it boils down to is being able to recognize the indigenous sovereignty of the Ochati Shakoni people, the Seven Council fires, or the Great Sioux Nation. So we would not be standing here today if the federal government had taken the time to recognize their sovereignty down, down south. If the city is going to show their support and vote on something, I hope that they vote to show their support to our relatives down in, down on Standing Rock. I had a couple other notes, but I lost my place. I apologize. I'll just leave it at there. I hope that this council takes the time to show their support. Thank you.
Thank you for attending and your comments. I would also make note that myself, and I'm sure many other aldermen received anywhere from six to 10 different emails today as well, in a varying degree of opposition or support. I would look to the council for a motion. Is there a motion for support on the amicus brief?
I will make a motion to not support the brief and remain neutral.
We have a motion for remaining neutral and not supporting the brief. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Alderman Padraig Gula, discussion on the motion. Alderman Padraig Gula.
Yeah. I like pipelines. They're clearly the safest way to transport petroleum products. There's no question that this would have a negative impact on the western part of the state if the pipeline were closed. That's not the issue. The issue is a very technical, legal one as to whether a court's order should be stayed. And I don't think the city of Minot has the expertise or the interest in something like that. It's like asking us to comment on someone who's appealing a robbery conviction in the district court in Fargo. That's not something the city of Minot normally would get involved in. I have my own feelings. I think it's a highly complex issue. It's in the courts now, and I think it should stay in the courts and be decided that way. I just don't see this as being a germane issue for Minot to take a stand on. There's been a great deal of controversy, there've been very strong feelings on all sides, or more than just two sides on this, I think, and I just don't think this is something I want to see the city dragged into. To my recollection, we've not generally signed on to amicus briefs or front-of-the-court briefs in the past. There also have been two very good, very clear briefs written, one on behalf of the state of North Dakota through the Attorney General's office, I think it's very persuasive. There's also a brief that's been written by the North Dakota Petroleum Council, by a Washington law firm, that's very persuasive. I'm not sure what the city of Minot would have to add to what's already been written. Appellate work before the D.C. Circuit Court is a very specialized, very prestigious, very highly paid kind of work. Lawyers who do this are the cream of the crop, and I'm not sure that we could add anything that they haven't already add or talked about. There's, let me leave it at that. I'm not offering any opinion on the merits of the pipeline or tribal sovereignty, which we have to pay attention to, or any of the host of other issues. My, my argument is that this is not something that really is relevant to what the city of Minot does on a day-to-day basis, and I think we should stick to doing the people's business and not get ourselves mired in very controversial and probably irresolvable issues. So it's a technical matter, it's a technical, very arcane legal issue of whether this court order should be allowed to go through or not, and I don't think I have any expertise on that.
Would remind council as well on this amicus brief. It is regarding on whether or not there is any impact to Minot or to cities in western North Dakota for the stay. Again, asking for the understanding of what the impact is, and I do believe this has impact day-to-day to the city of Minot, which is why I called the special meeting, looking at the Hub City funding and looking at flood control, as we've already seen a sharp reduction in the funds that have come from oil sales tax revenues as we are pushing oil, rather, flood control projects down the road because of a reduction that is due to COVID-19. But understandably, with the economic impact, it is, it is there and it will be there, and I felt it necessary to bring it forward to this council for its opinion on day-to-day impact, and I would argue that it absolutely will have an impact on day-to-day as we work towards our revenue projections for 2021. I am not going to support the, the motion as it is, but I do feel, do feel strongly that this governing body make its position known. Any other discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Janser.
Yeah, I guess, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I guess I think that focusing specifically on what we're actually being asked to do, which is to say that if the Dakota Access Pipeline is shut down, that it will have a financial impact on the city of Minot, I think that's a fact. Because of Hub City funding, because of funding from oil extraction tax that goes to State Water Commission and funds water projects, including flood control, it seems to me that letting this court know that we will be directly affected by that is not out of line. And it is certainly, I agree with Alderman Padraig Gula, that it's certainly up to the court then, given all of those impacts and what others may add to it, that they have to make a decision. But it does seem to me that making known to the court that, that our municipality and our taxpayers will be impacted is not out of line. And I guess, I may maybe ask the city attorney if sort of how I express seeing this is sort of accurate.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Janser, that might be a better question for either Jeff or Mr. Lakefield. I haven't been a part of the conversations or reviewed any of the drafts or anything like that on what exact position will be taken on behalf of WDA, DEA, so I think they would probably be better to answer that.
Is Mr. Simon on the conference call by chance?
I am on the call, Mayor Sitma. I'm here if you have any questions, or I can kind of run through some things and respond to some of the comments that have been made.
Mr. Jeff, if you could either speak up, and I'll ask our PIO in the back to maybe boost the audio, as it's a little bit difficult to hear you. If you would, start again, sir.
Okay, yeah. I can give you a rundown and maybe respond to a couple of the comments that have been made to this point, and give you an idea of the other participating cities, counties. At this point, I expect, in fact, I already have commitment from city of Dickinson, city of Williston, city of Watford City, to sign on as a party to the brief, and that's all you're doing is signing on to a party to the brief. It doesn't obligate you for any further legal proceedings at all. The point of what the Western Dakota Energy Association is doing here, we want to make sure that the court understands that obviously this potential shutdown goes far beyond the pipeline and the companies that use it to ship crude oil. It affects the state, obviously, but we want to make sure the court understands that the, that the oil extraction and production tax distribution formulas go out to support the communities. And as you've indicated, Hub City funding, the Common Schools Trust Fund gets oil tax revenue, the Resources Trust Fund, which provides money to the State Water Commission, gets money from this trust fund. The May production numbers were just released today. 858,000 barrels per day was the average production in May compared to, well, we topped 1.5 million earlier this year. The concern is, if the pipeline shuts down, so does the restart of the industry, and we may languish at those production levels for some time. This could have very long-term ramifications for Minot and the entire state of North Dakota. We need the, the court to absolutely understand the potential ripple effects of shutting down this pipeline, putting this crude on rail, which is far less safe than a pipeline, and costs a whole lot more. The, the economic ramifications of this cannot be overstated. It, it would be devastating to the state and all the communities that depend on the industry and that support the industry.
Please continue.
Well, I was just going to say, our, our amicus brief is being filed in support of the motion made by the Department of Justice on behalf of the Corps of Engineers. They vehemently maintain that they did everything proper, that the environmental assessment of the pipeline and the integrity of the crossing was quite thorough. And just the idea that three years after a project has been operating safely that it be shut down is actually, they argue beyond the authority of the court to even do that. We are supporting that motion in our brief, and the, the stay has been granted based upon the, the, the motion filed by Energy Transfer Dakota Access, but it is only there until the court decides, this three-judge panel decides, if the decision to shut down the pipeline was warranted. There are several steps in this process. After that, they will determine if, in fact, an environmental impact statement is justified under the National Environmental Policy Act. There's a lot of moving parts in this, but right now, the primary purpose of this is just for the court to understand the enormous ripple effect that a shutdown would have.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Any questions? Well, Mr. Simon, Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Simon, have there been any communities that have remained neutral or not signed on at this point that you've requested?
None. Everyone we've asked to participate is signing on, and I can, I can complete the list here. We have the, the parties that have committed to joining right now are Dunn, Billings, Williams, McKenzie, and Emmons County, a non-oil-producing county where the pipeline crosses. The Montreal County Commission will meet Monday morning, and we expect their decision to join, as will Morton County, the other pipeline, or the other county where the pipeline crosses the river. We expect Morton County to become a party to the brief as well. So in all, we're looking at seven counties, and if Minot would join, we'd have four cities, including all three hub cities.
Alderwoman Evans.
One of my concerns is that it is very unorthodox to ask any entity to sign on to an amicus they have not actually seen. You know, this is a brief that we theoretically have heard what it will contain, but I think it would behoove us to have some due diligence to actually, perhaps even delay our decision until we actually see what we're affixing our name to. Certainly, if it is, you know, what has been theoretically proposed, then, you know, we have something to, to discuss. But even Mr. Simon has brought up other issues beyond economic that he's alluded to the brief may go to, that are outside the parameters of what we've been told the brief will include. So I would be more comfortable actually having that brief in hand to see what, if this body decides to proceed as signing on, what we're signing on to.
If I may respond, Mayor and Commissioner, or council members, the deadline for submission is Monday. We don't have a whole lot of time. Mr. Lakefield, I believe, has in his possession a news release that came from the Western Dakota Energy Association, just issuing a plea to Judge Bostberg to reverse his decision and consider the economic ramifications, both immediate and potentially long-term, on the state of North Dakota and the communities that are affected by the decision. It basically encapsulates what we will, we will provide in the brief. We're not going really beyond economics and safety versus, of rail versus pipeline. That's, that's the context of the brief. You know, one, one element that we will include in there is what happens if a lot of this crude does go on rail? What happens to the ag community and others who depend on the railroad to move commodities? This will congest the rail lines, and we could have harvest delays, and it could negatively affect commodity prices, in fact, most likely would. There are all sorts of these ripple effects that, that we really need to convey, but they are all primarily economic in nature.
Any further questions for Mr. Simon? Thank you, Jeff. If we do have any more, we'll, we'll hold you on the line until, until we have concluded. Alderman Pitner.
Mayor, I just thought, something popped in my head from Mr. Simon. Mr. Simon, when do you expect the brief to be completed, presented, or ready, ready for presentation after this? This vote?
We are working with a firm called Crowell &amp; Mooring. That is the name of the firm in D.C. They have, I mean, this is obviously being compiled on very short notice. I have been promised a draft, the first draft, no later than Monday morning. But again, it needs to be filed, the absolute deadline is close of business Monday afternoon. It's potentially, it's a possibility you could see a draft of it. If you wanted to have another special meeting Monday, we could accommodate that, but as I say, the time is very limited to get this whole project put together.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Simon. I had perhaps misspoke and may have said Friday at close of business, but Monday, close of business, and, Mr. Simon, do you know if that is Eastern, Central, or which?
I would, I would, I don't know for sure, Mayor. I would presume it's 5:00 PM Eastern Time, Monday.
Thank you. For the questions or comments. Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess this may be directed towards Mr. Simon to, to answer, but just to dumb this down for myself, one, there will be no further legal obligation from the city of Minot for this, and we are simply being asked, are we economically impacted by the shutdown of the pipeline? the pipeline?
In essence, that's correct, yes. No further obligation, legal or otherwise. The primary purpose in asking the city of Minot to join the brief is simply to add weight to the, you know, to add gravity to the points we're trying to make here, that we have tremendous concern about the ramifications of a shutdown. And, you know, when you demonstrate that we've got the hub cities and the largest oil-producing counties and, and the counties where the pipeline crosses the river onboard with the statements we make, are making in the brief, I think it just adds a lot of weight to the argument. That's all we're really trying to do is, is to have this brief be as impactful as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Simon, you and I have had this conversation, and obviously, there's a cost associated with this brief. I believe Western Dakota Energy Association is paying for a substantial portion of that, and you were looking for contributions from other entities that are signing on. In our conversation, you had said that that's kind of up to us if we wanted to contribute, or if there was an expectation of what would be contributed? Is that correct?
Yeah, I can explain that, Mr. Lakefield. The cost of the brief, you know, I gulped at the initial price they quoted us, and then I got a different number of $30,000 is the flat fee that it's going to cost to develop the brief. The Western Dakota Energy Association is prepared to pay at least half of that, $15,000. And our ask, and again, it's not mandatory that Minot contribute, but our ask is that you be prepared to chip in. And I would suggest if you, you made a motion, just make it say that you would contribute in an amount not to exceed, let's say, $2,500. With these other, other participating parties, I think the, the ask will actually be even less than that. But when you consider that the shutdown decision would have a multi-billion dollar effect on the state's economy, a couple thousand dollars doesn't seem like much.
Further questions or comments? Alderman Padogula.
Mr. Simon, I don't know you at all, so I can't call you Jeff. This thing is starting to morph. I've been very clear that I support pipelines. I think they're very safe. I think I've been very clear that this would have a tremendous economic impact on the city and the state. I guess I'm not quite sure what more you want. I think we're starting to get dragged into something, and now we're being asked to spend money on something that I'm not sure is a legitimate thing for the city of Minot to be involved in. I really have reservations about that. You know, I can't say how strongly enough I like pipelines. I've been saying that for years, if not decades. The issue is whether this is germane for the city to become involved. It's a very technical legal matter. And as for us adding weight to it, I read both briefs. The brief from the Attorney General's Office was very persuasive. I don't, I think that speaks for itself. The brief for the Petroleum Council is very persuasive, the support brief. And I imagine that the original motion that these briefs are supporting will be even more persuasive with all the, you know, heavy-duty Washington firms, Washington law firms being dragged into this. I, I'm starting to feel more uncomfortable, okay? I'll be very candid with you. There's no question, I have no problem if the city writes a letter, you know, saying this is going to, you know, cost us a lot of money. But those things have already been said, in their emails to us. The Petroleum, the WDA has said the state tax commissioner has prepared a very detailed listing of how the cities and counties would take a hit on this. You know, I think enough's enough, that good things have been said for it. You know, and like I said before, there are other sides, and I'm just getting the feeling that I'm being pressured personally. Maybe this is wrong, maybe it's not the intent, that I'm being pressured to move into something that is it just not a can of worms, but a barrel of worms. You know, I have no problem if the city says, look, this is what we expect the economic impact to be. I have no problem in, in saying oil is a very important thing for our state and for our country. It's a matter of very high national security. I'll be very honest with you. I don't want our men and women dying in the sands of Arabia. So I think there are a lot of issues here, and I see myself, you know, being pushed or pulled down the slippery slope. I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable signing on to an amicus brief that I haven't seen and we haven't seen and won't be available till Monday. In the past, the council has been rushed into some things, and it hasn't turned out well. I don't think this is that kind of thing, but we are opening up a whole host of issues, and I'm just not comfortable with that. So I was very honest with you. You know, I'm a fan of pipelines. You know, I'm a fan of oil, of national security. I'm a fan of oil production in a reasonable fashion, but there are limits, and I'm starting to be pushed to those limits, especially when you're asking for 2,500 bucks from us, where I think it won't have any difference. Those briefs were very sound to me as a layperson, and I trust that, you know, Attorney General's Office and the Washington DC law firms can produce a very high-quality work. And I just don't know that we need to add on to that, especially not for 2,500 bucks.
Councilman, if I may respond.
Please, Mr. Simon.
I don't, I don't disagree with really anything you've said except one thing. Minot is not being dragged into this. Minot is already in this. We're all in this. This will affect everyone in the state, and we're just trying to get our voice in front of that court to let them know the local impact of the consequences of this decision. And I agree with you, the state and the Petroleum Council prepared marvelous briefs. But if you look back just a few weeks, the state submitted other amicus briefs in support of a decision to keep the pipeline in operation. They were very good as well, and they made economic points as well, but they were ignored by Judge Bostberg. I think we need to speak loud and clear and, you know, as many of us as possible, need to shout from the roofs that this is a bad decision, and it would have enormous impacts on, on the state of North Dakota. That's why I'm asking Minot to join. And I think, you know, if your council is uncomfortable making a financial contribution, that's not a requirement of this. We just would like to have your name among the others in support of the Department of Justice's motion to stay this decision and to ultimately overturn the order to shut down the pipeline.
Further questions or comments? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I can respect everyone's opinion on this. Obviously, like I think, I believe it was Alderman Padogula had stated, there's, there's more than two sides to this, there's several sides to this. And, and again, there's, there's commodity issues, there's oil price issues, there's, there's health and safety issues. And again, with, with that becomes, again, what was stated earlier, train congestion on the rails, does that affect commodity prices down the line? Does it affect safety? We, we were very aware of what happens when a train derails very close to a highly populated area, happened back in 2002 with, and hydrosmoni spill. What happens when you're carrying crude products and petroleum products on the railway? There's, there's a whole host of issues. And, and my perspective on this is that we don't have to contribute financially, we have no further legal obligation, and we're simply being asked, does this affect us economically? And that's, that's, I think, where we have to leave it. And, and I, and I get the, the social issues and all that attached. We're not addressing those at this meeting. We're just being asked, are we affected economically? And the answer, in my opinion, is yes. I think everyone would agree with that. So I can't support the motion that's, that's been proposed. And we'll leave it at that.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Can I withdraw my motion? And I have another one.
I would look to the second for the decision on the withdrawal of the motion by Alderwoman Evans.
Sure.
Okay, Alderwoman Evans.
I would like to then submit a motion that we postpone this till Monday morning. I know that this is not convenient for any of us, but I have grave concerns signing on to an amicus we have not laid eyes on. So I'd like to lay eyes on this before, and I think it behooves us to have a look at the amicus we would attach our name to.
Motion to postpone until Monday, is that the same as table? I would look under our Robert Rules of Order? Is that just, I'm looking for the reason of discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, this is debatable.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Padogula. Motion to postpone till Monday morning. I have not looked at any schedules myself. This would have to be done in a timeframe that it is drafted and available for review. Alderman Janser.
Yeah, I guess the statement of Monday morning maybe could be modified to, you know, Monday, you know, if it's 1:00 in the afternoon, or, you know, some time that would provide those folks enough time to get their work completed and get it into our hands. So, and then still allow them time to get it filed. You know, if we sign on, they still have to file it before close of business, which is likely 4:00 our time. So I guess I'd modify the time or the designation of morning, but that's...
Alderman Pittner.
Mayor Simon, I just want to let it be known that I will not be able to attend any time on Monday, so before close of business, so I will support the motion, because I would not be able to attend, nor would I be able to telephone in.
My time as well on Monday is exceptionally limited. Not that I couldn't attend in half-hour sessions, but we tend to run over half-hour sessions within most of our meetings. Discussions on the motion to postpone until Monday morning. Alderman Pittner.
Mayor Sitma, if I may add, Jeff Simon here again.
Go ahead, Mr. Simon.
If you would wish that I joined the meeting again, I just would make you aware that I will be participating in a meeting with the Montreal County Commission at 8:30 Central Monday morning, and the Morton County Commission is planning a noon meeting on Monday. So a mid-morning timeline would be, would be probably okay. And I can assure you, we will have a draft in our hands and share it with you as soon as it's available.
Alderman Pittner.
I just wanted to address one other thing that I thought of, I was going to say, but didn't look at my notes. Just in response to Alderman Padogula's comments about being very vocal on her support and not maybe needing to sign on, I think we see that with even what we just went through here locally as far as an election. You can support a candidate all you want and voice your opinion, but unless you actually put your name on a ballot and cast it, it doesn't matter. So I think putting her name, it does mean a lot to put her name. And I, I appreciate your, your support with it, but I think there is, there's weight behind signing on to something like this when we're asked if this does affect us economically. Just wanted to put my opinions out there in response to that.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone until Monday morning. Seeing none, motion is to postpone discussion for a special meeting until Monday morning. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
No.
Padogula?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Sitma?
No. Motion carries. We would be looking for a special meeting then on Monday morning at some point. I would just look to my own schedule that I am unavailable before 9:00 and unavailable from 11:00 till noon. So we do, and to have a quorum, we will have to coordinate that Monday. I will talk with Tammy and have her reach out. Mr. Simon, is there the availability? Do you feel that we will have that prior to 8:30 on Monday morning?
The brief itself prior to 8:30?
Yes.
I can't say for sure, but I certainly expect to see something, you know, early Monday morning. And the folks in Washington are on East Coast time, so I would hope I would have it by 8:00 Central at the latest.
Mr. Simon, if you could, forward that to myself, to Mr. Lakefield, and to the clerk. And we will make sure that the moment that becomes available, that that is emailed out to the full council. And I would anticipate calling a special meeting at some point then Monday morning. Alderman Padogula.
Mayor, in view of the scheduling and other issues and quorum issues, you know, I guess I'm wondering if we could dispense with the amicus business and just write a letter, because I think all of us here are supportive of that, have you write a letter saying, look, this is going to have a major impact on the economy of the, of the community and the region, and we have serious concerns about safety? And just leave it at that, and that way, we're putting, we're verifying what they're trying to say. What they say is their major point. I agree with their major point. I just have a problem with going so far as the amicus brief. To me, that connotes a level of support that I'm just not comfortable with, and it opens up a whole bunch of issues. I have no problem at all with the city going on record confirming that this has economic impacts, and there are safety concerns we have, and then we could be done with it today.
Alderwoman Evans.
So unfortunately, Alderman Padogula, that's not how courts work. We can't just write a letter. You know, if there, you have to do it through, you know, there are established rules. And so, like the judge, it wouldn't get into the record if Mayor Sitma wrote a letter on behalf of the council. That's not sort of the rules of evidence for appellate. So it's like, no, I mean, but that's why there's amicus briefs and, you know, briefs by the defendants and the plaintiffs and the appellies. So this is, like, you know, he could write the letter, or we could write the letter, and it would not be entered into the court record.
Could it be attached as an addendum to that? Articles, scientific articles, letters from professional organizations are often attached.
Those have to be part of a formal amicus. So when the American Psychological Association does an amicus, right, they attach, you know, it is through that brief, then, all of their secondary information and supporting evidence is attached to the brief.
Okay, just a thought.
Yeah.
For council's recommendation, I would propose, and I do apologize, Alderman Pittner, a 10:00 special meeting, only because I'm looking at CTE meetings and other meetings that have already been scheduled. I would assume if we have any significant questions, as we get those, perhaps, Mr. Simon, you can include your email, or I'm sorry, the clerk can include Mr. Simon's email with any specific questions that might be able to expedient, expedite that meeting. If not, I will try to have Tammy send out and city clerk send out a notice of a special meeting, unless anyone has objection, 10:00 Monday morning for the revisiting of this Seeing no objections, we have, thank you, Mr. Simon, and thank you, Alderwoman Olson, for being on the call today at noon. We have only one other item on our agenda, and that is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Alderwoman Evans, second by Alderman Pittner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.